Good evening and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach Second Public Budget Hearing and Special Meeting today, Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020 at 5:30 PM. John, would you please give us an introduction?
Yes, hello and welcome. My name is John McNally and I'll be providing assistance to the mayor and elected officials during today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise during this public meeting. There will be specific times during this meeting when members of the public can ask questions and provide feedback. The first way is by typing their question into the questions section at the bottom of the GoToWebinar interface. Those items will be read into record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. Please be sure to include your name for the record. The second way is by using the GoToWebinar interface and clicking on the raise hand option. A meeting organizer will announce the speaker and unmute their audio, at which time the speaker should state their name for the record. Before speaking, please take steps to minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your device during your allotted time. I will now turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you so much, John. So in honor of Rosh Hashanah, I'm going to say the prayer over the shofar. Baruch atah nai, lohenu melech ha'asolam, ha'sherkach ha'adonim, ha'mishotov itivenu. Lesama'a ka'al shofar. Blessed are thou, Lord our God, master of the universe, who sanctifies us with his commandments and commands us to hear the sounds of the shofar. This is the Jewish New Year and like our city, we are going to get into a new fiscal year. And so I wish many blessings on all of our staff, residents, businesses, and visitors as we move forward. And now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Justin Katz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Ty Penzerga.
Here.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Woodrow L. Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Our first order on the agenda, oh, I'm sorry, agenda approval. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I add a time-sensitive discussion about virtual versus in-person commission meetings?
You want to put that as item F?
Yes, please.
All right. And may I have a motion to approve as amended?
I'll move.
Second. All right. All those in favor, state so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. First item is conduct Second Public Budget Hearing for Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Final Milage and Annual Operating Budget. I'd like to do it the same way we did the last time, here, presentation, open it up to the public. Or, and I'm sorry, ask any questions that we have, open it up to the public, make any final comments, and then a motion to approve. Sound good?
Sound good.
All right. Mara, do you have a brief presentation?
Yes, I do.
Give me a second and I'll cue that up. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mara Frederson, Director of Financial Services. Tonight is the Second Public Budget Hearing, September 22nd, for Fiscal Year 2021. Next slide, please. The purpose of our hearing tonight is our final review and discussion for the adoption of the final milage rate. The current fiscal year 19 and tentative 2021 milage is the same at 7.9. And also a final review and discussion for the adoption of the final budgets. Our general fund budget currently is proposed at 99.2 million or 43.8% of all funds. And our total budget is 226.3 million. Next slide, please. All of our funding sources total 226.3 million. Water and sewer make up 52.2 million or 23.1% of that. Property taxes are 41.2 million or 18.2%. And then your capital and reserves are 30.2 million or 13.3%. The rest are internal service funds, solid waste, public service tax, intergovernmental charges for services, special assessments, license and permits, and franchise taxes. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown by fund of the 226.3 million. Your general fund is 99.2 million. Your enterprise funds make up 65 million. Your internal service funds are 16.4 million. Special revenue funds are 4.3 million. Capital projects, including general CIP, Parks and Rec Trust, and general government and utility make up 30.2 million. And our debt service funds are 10.2 million, making up that 226.3 million. Next slide, please. Our proposed tax versus the rollback rate, currently our proposed milage rate is 7.9. The rollback rate would be 7.4911. If we chose to go back to that, your deficit or budgets difference would be $2,115,049. Next slide, please. Currently, we are proposing to stay at the same milage rate or 7.9, which is not an increase from last year. The actual tax experience is 5.46% for this trim calculations. If you look at a basic residential property, 1920, the annual at the adopted calculation is $395. If we went back to the rollback, it would be $392. The proposed at the 7.9 is $413. So the residential property experience is about a 2.3% difference. Next slide, please. And that's it.
Mara, I know the question I had, and I hope you have the slide to bring up was the budget, I'm sorry, was the reserves over the past five years?
I do not have that slide in this presentation.
All right. Then I will pull it up and I'll ask the City Commission if they have any questions in regards to the budget.
I do not.
Commissioner Katz?
I'm good at this stuff.
Yeah.
The one question I had is that when we changed the was it Harvey lawyer junior permit vote fee to $200, did that affect any money? Or are we expecting the same revenue?
We have not adjusted the revenues for that change in the permit fees, no.
Okay. All right.
Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Romulus.
My question is, what are we doing to address the 1.2 million shortfall that we discussed last time?
Lori, do you have an answer for that question?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, so we had, we are going to be utilizing, and Mara can bring up the exact number, but it's, I think, 900,000 and change of undesignedated fund balance to fill the $1.2 million gap. We did have a new position funded in the budget, which I removed, which was a cybersecurity administrator to be added to the ITS staff. It's about a $100,000 position, so we pulled that out.
Right, and we adjusted.
Yeah, I'm trying to, those are two big things.
SP&L revenues up about 150,000, so that compensated for the difference.
Pretty conservative originally on our franchise fees, but we've since determined we're able to not have to be as conservative, so that's helping as well.
Right, so the appropriation of fund balance is $931,263 in this budget.
And where does that leave us with our reserves? And I'd also like to know, in terms of the 10% requirement in our charter, where are we? How do we compare?
So, Ms. Romulus, I'm going to pull up the slide right now. Just letting you know if, does everybody see?
Yes. Yep. So if you'll notice, Commissioner Romulus, the estimated fund balance is 16.5 million at the end of this year. Based on our 10%, we'd have to leave 9.9 million in our emergency reserves.
Banded via resolution. So everything above that is what we refer to. Those are actual, the 10% is a designated reserve. The balance or the difference, excuse me, between the 9 million and change and 16 is what we refer to often as the undesignedated fund balance. Savings account, reserves, unappropriated, called a variety of things.
Mayor? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Regarding, excuse me, my dogs are barking, unfortunately. My question to staff is with this 9.9 million, the 10% that's required by ordinance, approximately how long would that fund last us in terms of monthly operations? Should there be a crisis?
Does that cover us for three months?
Three months, yep.
So we have at least three months operating?
Correct. For your general fund, yes.
Okay.
Our funds all have their other own revenue sources and reserves as well.
And so is
he knows offhand what the utility reserves are, but we certainly build utility reserves as well.
So is a three-month operating reserve fund the intended goal? Have we met that, or are we aiming for five months of emergency funds?
City manager, I'd prefer to see six months of operating. And it's, you know, the mayor and I had a brief conversation today about whether or not, and that's really somewhat of a policy that the commission may want to take up and talk about one day is where, what are your thoughts on what is a comfortable savings account? Do we want to say we want this, I mean, the commission in the past obviously set the 10%, and that's adopted. That could be changed. It could be changed by you, it could be changed or not changed at all, and then set a goal. And each year, you know, we budget a certain amount. That is just a budget. That doesn't mean we're going to go spend every dime in our budget, and we never do. We certainly can't go over it. That's against the law. But we always come in under it. We tighten up come year end, purchasing gets somewhat cut off. If you haven't gotten it yet, then maybe you don't need it type of thing. And start peeling back and typically have money to return back into that undesignedated fund balance. So that is our goal, because our budget is exactly that. It's an estimation of expenditures for the next fiscal year. So, you know, we always aim to try to get money back in there and build that. And I'd love to see it a little higher. We're not in bad shape, Mara, would you say, compared to other cities? Where do we fall?
Comparatively, I would say we're reasonably healthy. Obviously, our utilities has six months of operating in their fund balance. I would like to see us get to that six month with the general fund. You know, obviously, in some of the earlier years, it was down at, you know, 8.4 million in 2010. You know, we've been slowly building that up. I'd like to see it get to where we maintain a six-month operating in our fund balance.
Trying for the Great Recession, we had 26 million in there. And, you know, that saved us in many, many years to come, going through the Great Recession, and it really, but it ate directly into that undesignedated fund balance. It was there for that rainy day. We needed it, but now we're building it back up.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Hay.
I certainly concur with Vice Mayor on that. I would love to see six months at least compared to what it's been. Especially now that we're looking at climate change and we've already run out of the alphabet with the storms. And so things are really changing and we do ourselves a good favor if we would think ahead and be proactive in this and try to be ready if such a catastrophe, catastrophic thing happened. So I'm all for putting it, starting it in our next budget. Whether it be all at once or gradually, we proceed to that six months.
Okay, see, I'm in disagreement because, you know, I understand that our funding is not the same as most businesses, like our water utility. It's not on a monthly thing. It's, you know, starting in December, we receive ad valorem taxes all the way through April, and then if nobody pays the taxes, then in May, there's a tax certificate issued and we get paid that way. You know, the enterprise funds, like a golf course or sanitation and water utility. And so I'm not necessarily concerned about having a six-month emergency operating because, you know, if the world ends, the world ends. You know, I'm more in trying to invest in our city. I know in the past four years that I've been here, when our firefighters needed that extra million dollars in their pension, we provided that. When our fire, when our police officers needed that extra million dollars to help make them, their pay competitive, we did that. And one of the things that we have not done in, what, six or seven years, is lower the milage rate. And I think, you know, I would like that we start lowering the milage rate so that our residents know that we understand that they are paying the burden of the city. And, you know, my whole hope is that it's not the rollback rate of last year. But it's, I was looking at Delray, and they go out to the 10,000th of a decimal for the milage. I'd like to go out to say, instead of 7.9, to say 7.89 or 7.899 so that our residents know that we are thinking about them. We understand that times are tough. And you know what? After this year, we are going to plan to lower the milage rate. It's not necessarily going to lower taxes, but it's going to, A, you know, increase our property values because taxes is one of those things that affects property values. And B, it's going to let our residents and businesses know that we are using their money wisely. And that's kind of what I would hope is that, I'm not saying that we, you know, go to 7.4, but I think we should go at least below 7.9 because, Lori, how long has it been at 7.9?
I think, I think we, I'm going on seven years, I think, so probably six. I think we raised it once from seven, seven to seven, eight, and it went to seven, nine, and it stayed flat.
And so, you know, it's amazing that during our building of our town square, that we were able to save one and a half million dollars. You know, a lot of people were worried that it was, this city hall and civic center were going to cost us a lot of money. And so, you know, you know, I'd like to see if your thoughts and feelings that we go to 7.89. You know, it's more of a showing of our understanding of our taxpayers than actual money in the bank. But I think that's kind of it, is that, you know, I've heard of a lot of complaints where they've been paying, you know, their taxes every year, and it has not gone down at all because the property value has been going up. So I'd like to hear your comments on that.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I certainly appreciate the sentiment, but my concern would be marginally lowering it to the effect that the average taxpayer saw a savings of a couple pennies a year might look patronizing and as though we're trying to claim we're lowering taxes without actually lowering anyone's taxes in a meaningful way. So I, my personal opinion, I'd love to get to a point where we were making meaningful tax cuts in our milage rate, but I don't think now's the appropriate time for that. And I'm comfortable with the current proposed milage rate at this time.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Hay.
I concur with Commissioner Katz. I just feel that 7.9, the way it is now, is really a positive. It's not a negative. The fact that we've been able to keep it there and still do all the other operations and jobs that we need to do. Plus the fact that if we needed those funds, we could still go in and shift those funds around because, as I stated earlier, a budget is nothing more than a projection of what you're going to spend. If things happen and we need to move funds around, then that's what we do. But I don't, I don't want to play those little small games. I think some important now, that keeping the milage rate the same is a step in the right direction and is a positive move rather than a negative move.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I chime in? I actually share many of your sentiments. It has always been my intention to eventually bring this discussion to lowering the milage rate. And obviously, none of us expected COVID, and so the question now is, it's not, do we lower the milage rate or not? I mean, from my standpoint, I'm in favor of lowering the milage rate, but the real question is timing. Is this the time to do it? And certainly, we want to do it in such a way, as Commissioner Katz said, we want to do it in a meaningful way, not just pennies on the dollar. So I think next year, I will have a position to aggressively lower the milage rate. So it's a substantial and meaningful change, but in a time where we're facing a deficit, a shortfall, now is not the time. But next year, I will be in that position.
Okay. And Commissioner Romulus, do you have any comments before we move forward?
None to add to this particular conversation right now.
Okay. I'll open it up to the public. John, if anybody has any hands raised or questions? Now would be the time.
I have just enabled the option.
Yep. And we do have someone here with me. You don't have to have your mask if it's bothering you.
Hi, I'm Darrell Sanders, address 2001 Northwest Second Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. I know last year, we didn't get to spend any money on like city holidays and events and stuff like that. My foundation, Sherry TV Foundation, Inc., has come up with a Juneteenth Day Committee. So we would like to plan for Juneteenth of next year, and we just wanted to know like how much was in the budget for the Juneteenth Day celebration now that we've proclaimed it as a holiday in the city of Boynton. So I would like to know if I can be in touch with someone to discuss a budget for Juneteenth of 2021. That'd be all. Thank you.
And Lori, yes?
To address Mr. Sanders' question, we have, we fund, and Mayor, I think you and I have talked about it. We fund about $25,000 in special events for MLK. And I really think, I mean, we did not increase our budget for the events at all, and we are funded for a parade that we'll be talking to you about at the next meeting, and whether or not that should happen. And I certainly hope next year with Fourth of July, but we really only fund those three events. So if the commission desires, I think we can work out something between with the 25,000 to, we went from 5,000 to 25,000 for the MLK event. Perhaps take 5,000 of that and be able to do something great with Juneteenth.
And I think that it's important that we do have it. I know that Eleanor is going to get with the MLK Committee soon to start the discussion. And one of the things that we didn't have for the MLK Day that I would hope for that we have Juneteenth is vendor, you know, for-profit vendors, so, or sponsors. So that's something that I think, you know, working with a nonprofit will make it easier than the city running the whole show. So it's more of, I think, what can the city help sponsor the Juneteenth event is what we'll be looking for, so. All right. And John, do you see someone with their hand raised or a question mark?
Mayor Grant, at this time, I do not.
All right. And so if there's no further comments, we'll get a motion to approve the milage rate.
We'll move.
Second.
The milage rate remain at 7.9.
All right. And I have a second by Commissioner Katz. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, state so by saying nay. Nay, the motion passes four to one. Proposed Resolution Number 20-107, Adopt the Final Budget for the General Fund and All Other Funds for Fiscal Year 2020-2021.
Mayor, go back one second, please. This is Jim Sheriff. You didn't, you did not announce before that vote that it was Resolution 106 on the, on the milage rate, and that title should be read, please.
All right, so we got to do it all over again. Jim, why don't you read us the title?
It's Resolution 20-106, A Resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, Adopting a Final Milage Rate for the City's General Operating Fund for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2020 and Ending September 30, 2021, Providing that the Final Milage Rate of 7.900 mils is 5.46% above the rollback rate of 7.4911 mils, Providing Perceivability Conflict and Providing an Effective Date.
All right. So the first motion was not valid, so I'll need another motion for Resolution 106.
So move.
Yeah. We'll move. Five seconds.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, state so by saying nay. Nay, motion passes four to one.
Resolution R. 2107, A Resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, Adopting a Final Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2020 and Ending September 30, 2021, Providing Perceivability Conflicts and an Effective Date.
Is there any comments regarding the budget? My only comment is, is that, you know, that we have the dog days at the beach, and so I'm excited for that. I was there today and we got to, with, we got their foundation name, but our sustainability coordinator, we got to plant, I think, 200 trees and plants as part of the dune system. So seeing no further discussion, Jim, do you mind reading off the resolutions?
I think I read 107 already. You're good to go. Just need a vote on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Five seconds.
All right. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Resolution 2108, A Resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Ratifying the 2020-2021 Annual Budget for the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency and Providing an Effective Date.
So move. Second.
Second.
All right. Is any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Resolution R. 2109, A Resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Ratifying the 2020-2021 Annual Budget of the Quanta Park Overlay Dependent District and Providing an Effective Date.
So move. Second.
Any discussion from the board or commission? I don't think anyone's been raising their hands. So all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
And finally, Resolution R. 20-110, A Resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, Amending Resolution R. 20-078, Approving an Updated Parking Division Fee Schedule approving an updated parking division fee schedule associated with the installation of automatic parking technology, including, includes rates, permits, valet violations, and penalties, and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
All right, discussion?
Yes.
No comments from me personally beyond what we spoke about last time, but I just wanted to double check in case there were any public speakers, because I know there were numerous people with input on this before we vote.
Mayor Grant, this is John McNally. The options to provide input are still enabled since before, and there have been no raised hands or questions posted.
Thank you. Seeing no further. Yes.
I just wanted to reiterate my position regarding the boat ramp fees. You know, I've heard all of your comments, and I agree that the users should pay their share for the improvements of the ramp. But I really do not believe that this is the best time to be raising rates. I can understand if it were a few dollars, but a fourfold increase or sevenfold increase, I just think that's not a good time. And I don't particularly understand the rush to make that change. We could do it next year when the economy gradually bounces. And so for that reason, I will not be voting in favor of this.
Mayor? Yes, Commissioner Katz? Question for staff, whether it's Lori or someone else. When was the scheduled maintenance or, you know, the redoing of the ramp? When is that taking place? Is that in this upcoming fiscal year?
I'm going to say yes, and Colin, correct me or Andrew, but I think we've completed the design of the boat ramp. And in next year's capital, we will be spending 1.7 million dollars to complete. And I believe it will be completed within the fiscal year. Colin, is that correct?
That's correct. This is Andrew Mack, Co-Orspector.
That's next year. The fees for the, go ahead, Andrew.
Only thing I would say subject to is that we not have officially been awarded the grant from the Florida Inland Navigational. We have a high probability that we will receive that grant. But right now, we have programmed in the CIP to do that project next fiscal year. Yes.
So here's my question, I guess, a follow-up to that, because this actually, I'm glad to slow down for a second to bring this up. When, if that move forward as planned, when would that start during the next fiscal year? And would presumably that be a total disruption to the ability for people to use the ramp?
It's another great question. So right now, what we plan, as soon as we hear that we are awarded the project, we hopefully would be out to bid in the very first quarter of next fiscal year, which would then probably put us in, start in probably the third quarter, maybe as soon as the second quarter. Typically, when you're, what we're being told is that we can phase that project. So there will be some disruption of the ramp, but the ramp will be open during the, throughout the construction. There may be one or two days where we have to shut it down for a day or two, but majority of the calendar year, the ramp will be open.
That's around weekends. That's important.
Andrew, when you said next fiscal year, you mean like right now, like in the next?
Starting October one, yeah.
Okay, so.
I'm still stuck in this financial fiscal year.
With that being said, and in the interest of maybe trying to strike a compromise, the current rate that we put forward is what, $200 for Florida residents?
Correct.
And the previous rate was $50?
Correct.
So, and subject to, you know, I hear diverse opinions up here right now, but just because there might be disruption and there could be something that happens that causes people who buy these passes not to see the full value, even if it was for a couple of days or week here or there. I would personally offer, if anyone supports it, coming in, coming in at $100 for this coming fiscal year, and then looking at upon completion of the project, ramping it back up, just because I don't, I wouldn't want to increase it so much with the possibility that construction-related activity or disruptions. I just don't want to be in that position, even if it was for a short while. And I'm fully on board with raising it the following year, but because there were spirited positions from residents and there's some divergent positions on this board, that's kind of my compromise position at this moment. My comments are, is that if we wanted to not charge the taxpayers much money, because, you know, this is taxes and revenue that used to build the boat ramp, then we could have lowered the military. The fact is, is that this is specifically for boaters. And if $200 is too much, and you don't feel like you're going to go there more than four times, what is it? Eight times during the weekend? You know, or 20 times during the week during the year, it would be better to do it on the à la carte method. But, you know, this is kind of where we've had people abuse the boat ramp and just leave trailers there, leave boats there. You know, I'd like to keep it at the 200, and if we need to lower it, we can do that then. But I think this is a fair number moving forward.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Hay.
I would like to hear Andrew Mack's response to, what does he feel the impact would be if we were to go from the 200 to the 100 based upon what he stated the last time that needed to be done there? Would it just delay it, or you would still move forward on the schedule that you have?
As far as whether the funding is in the surtax dollars. So is, or actually, as we pointed out, the surtax dollars and the grant is funding the project. So the revenue would not delay the project.
Okay.
Commissioner Hay, calling from Assistant City Manager. I'm going to go a little bit further than what Andrew said, because I think your question was the impact. There's two reasons for charging for parking. One is, is when parking's a premium, it regulates, it keeps spaces open more often. So people don't just, if it's free, people just leave it there for a long period of time. They're paying, they may rotate a little bit more often, giving more people access to the boat ramp and more people access to parking. So that's one reason. The second reason is you are charging to recover rates, whoever feeds for operation costs. So the impact from the 350 that was recommended to the 200 was somewhere between 30 and 40,000 dollars a year. Because I think that was your question, what was the financial impact? So going down, you can figure out, it's probably, I'm going to tell you, it's between about $15,000 per $50 of impact. So every $50 you get down, it's about 15,000 plus or minus, and it is very dependent on how many you sell. It is true, you may sell more at a lower rate, but you also, those boaters are using the spaces at that lower rate more often, not allowing the individual boaters who only use it three or four times a year, or the out-of-town boaters that are coming in. If they don't have the available space, they're not paying when they come in. So your impact could be much greater. It's very difficult to tell. It's really based on what that usage is. We do fill up the park on the weekends, we have not filled it up during the weekdays. We just don't know where it is. So I just wanted to answer your question about the financial impact.
Okay. Thank you, Colin.
Mayor Grant, this is John. I have a question and a hand raised by the same individual.
All right. So because his hand is raised, I'm going to let him speak. And so let's unmute. Adam Birdwell? It says you're self-muted if you'd like to speak. Otherwise, I can read your question if you don't respond. So Mr. Birdwell states, I understand residents needing to pay their fair share for usage of the ramp. What is the city going to do about charter boats for hire that consistently use the ramp even though they are not allowed to pick up paying customers at the ramp? If the city enforces and find them accordingly or require a license, it may be another way to increase revenue without hurting residents. So Andrew, are people allowed to use the boat ramp for charters without a business tax receipt?
I don't know that there's a prohibition about using the ramp and the tax receipt. Obviously, parking is a limiting factor there. We have very, very few car spaces, thinking that they would be there in a car. So if they came, they would be paying customer. So they would be paying a hourly rate as well as the, however the boat ramp is.
And they would be using that boat space. Again, there's about seven or eight car spaces there that we did make the decision, the commission made the decision when we first brought this forward, that those would be free and you wouldn't pay for those car parks because there's a playground there and things. So to answer the question, anybody who's a State of Florida resident can buy the pass. So if you're a commercial voter, or if you're a boat ramp, you could go there, you could pick people up from other places. So there's two ways of doing this. The à la carte is you just pay by the hour, it's a dollar fifty an hour. If you're out for six hours, it's, you know, nine bucks, less than the $10, you know, a day maximum rate. So it really depends on how people are using it. But yes, the commercial users could come in and use it and bypass, and there really isn't any control over that that we have.
And Colin, let me ask you a question. I know that we have 10 free spaces, but what happens if all of them are filled? And it's a busy weekend for boating? And it's just, you know, let's say there's five regular cars, do they charge the same amount?
Yes, if they park in a trip, yes, if they park in a trailer spot, they would be charged that now. Right now, and Andrew can probably answer better. I mean, we don't have any regulations, as we go in there and ticket them if they're parked in a trailer spot. If they're in a trailer spot, they pay the parking fee. You know, so again, pay parking is one way to regulate the parking and make sure everybody has a fair shot at bringing their boat to the ramp and using it every resident. So there's a balance.
Now I have a tricky question. What happens if there are two cars in one trailer parking spot?
Andrew, I'm going to let you answer that one.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What if there are two cars in one trailer parking spot?
If they're in a boat, if they're in a permitted, a metered spot, they have to pay the meter. Obviously, you know, if you park in front of somebody, they could be locked in. So, you know, it'd be a case-by-case situation, but they would have to pay the meter. Just one other thing about the rate, you know, I think, you know, being that there was a lot of discussion about the rate. We have received numerous phone calls that, you know, when we reduced the rate from 350 to 200, they felt like that was a more appropriate rate. So we have received that from those, but they felt like that was, you know, definitely a better rate and more, more in line with what they felt was reasonable. Just throwing that out.
Yeah. So if, I'll wait for any further discussion. If not, I'll take a motion or amended, a motion to amend.
So move.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hay or Commissioner Romulus?
We're making a motion to amend to 100?
No, I believe Commissioner Katz' motion to approve as stated.
No, two.
That's 200.
Right.
My position was amend to 100.
Okay, I'm sorry. So the current motion on the floor is to amend to 100. Do I have a second on that? One, two, three. All right. I do not hear a second. Yes, Commissioner Hay.
No, I'm not seconding that, I want to make another motion.
All right, well, the motion to amend to 100 is, fails for receiving a second, lack of second. Commissioner Hay, you have the floor.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we keep it at 200.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Point of order, it is, it already is that, so we don't need to make a motion for that.
No, we need to pass the Resolution R twenty dash one one zero.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed state so by saying nay.
Nay.
Commissioner Romulus, you are for the ayes?
I am for the ayes.
All right, the motion passes three to two. Thank you. And the next, last item for the agenda is the virtual meetings. Commissioner Katz or Jim, would you like to start off the conversation? Yeah, I would just, I would turn it over to Legal just as a safeguard, because obviously gatherings are still cause for concern. You know, especially as we open schools and watch cautiously as, as we see how that impacts COVID and the spread. I think that testament to your skills at this, you've done an amazing job at running these meetings all these months. And I don't see a need to rush back into a physical setting. You know, we have that option if we were to extend the local emergency resolution. So I'll turn it over, I guess, to Legal, but that's my logic, that by extending it, we can exercise that ability to stay virtual or go back. Whereas if we don't extend it, then we don't have that option anymore. Jim, do you have any comments in regards to that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you probably are aware, the governor's most recent order, which allowed us to conduct virtual meetings, will expire on September the 30th. So there is insufficient time for us to take back up the issue of extending it as a city ordinance and declaration of a local emergency. By virtue of the ordinance that you have adopted before, you had first reading on it, and we tabled second reading of it, because it looked like things might be working out to the benefit of the community, but that doesn't seem to be the case. So the procedure for extending it would now be for you to adopt an emergency ordinance that would extend it beyond September the 30th. That requires a special meeting of the commission. So a special meeting of the commission could be scheduled by the commission tonight. It'd also be scheduled unilaterally by the mayor or by three members of the commission. But since you're here in a meeting, it would be appropriate to schedule that. It would be a virtual meeting. And I have prepared, anticipating that you would want to do that, an emergency ordinance that explains and the adoption of the Werra's Clause is all the reasons for extending it further. It's not open-ended, or it will end at some particular point, but we don't know with certainty what's going to happen. So the commission could always take it up and extend it in the future. So if the commission is inclined to do that, you need to schedule a virtual meeting as a special meeting, one agenda item or other agenda items, if you wish to add on to it, to adopt an emergency ordinance.
So for me, I'd say let's, you know, it's not really emergency if you're planning it a week ahead of time. Is that correct, Jim?
No, the emergency ordinance vehicle allows you to do it on one ordinance reading with notice to the public. But it doesn't require two ordinances, so.
No, no, no. No, what I'm saying is, is that planning an emergency for the 29th in case if the governor does not extend his order, is that okay that we do this now, plan for a meeting next week, whether it be the 28th, 29th, the 30th?
Yeah, think of it a little bit like, you know, declaring an emergency when you know that there's a tropical storm that will develop into a hurricane that will hit the city two weeks from now or a week from now. You're anticipating it. When you get to that meeting, you'll take up the issue of the emergency and you'll be within the legal rights of the city under the state statute.
And we can cancel the emergency meeting how quickly before?
Anytime you like, as long as the clerk is able to determine that there won't be a quorum.
Okay. So I'll request that the city commission, you know, schedule emergency meeting Tuesday, the 29th at 5:30 to discuss the virtual meeting, emergency ordinance. And so if someone would like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Yes. So just, I don't know how, I have a prior commitment of meeting to approve the budget for the teachers' union that evening at 5:00 PM. So without asking everyone how they're voting, if, obviously, I'm in favor of this. If there are three or four people in favor of this as well, then my presence wouldn't be necessary. But in the event that I would be in the majority to do this, then I would feel my presence would be necessary. I don't know how to better word that, otherwise. So here's. So the so here here here's my statement is that, how do we feel about the ordinance? Though the one thing that I don't like about our current virtual ordinance is the city commission is not required to put their face. On video chat if they have the the capability to do that. And so that would be my only request, that if you're able to have a video chat that you you are video screen on, whether it be your phone, tablet. Or computer, because we as the city have that those resources. That's what I would like to see as part of our emergency ordinance to account as a. As attendance.
And we could, I could also offer a substitute motion to hold the meeting on Monday at five P M, if there is no objection.
I'm fine with that.
Yep. Well, I have a huge objection, it's Yom Kippur, I will not be able to make it.
Wednesday at five P M, if there is no objection.
That is the day of the deadline.
So we will know if we have to have the meeting before or not. So I I will draw my motion for the twenty ninth and accept the the substitute motion for the thirtieth.
Thank you, sir, is that but Jim with legal, is that? If if the emergency order were to cease that day, would it be like midnight? Or would we be before or after the, because it would be a virtual meeting to vote to extend it to a virtual meeting, and would that be out of line?
It it will be, it will expire at midnight on the thirtieth. The governor's order.
So so we are fine if we hold the meeting at five P M on the thirtieth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'm getting close.
All right. Do I have a a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion from the city commission? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Mayor and commission, I will circulate the draft ordinance tomorrow morning, if not tonight, for you to start to look at. And the provisions that explain why we're doing it.
And so before Jim draws up the the draft. Can I get consensus in regards to, you know, requiring a video presence to be counted as attendance? Yes, Commissioner Hay.
That doesn't bother me at all. I I understand what you're saying, but as long as I can hear them clearly and the voting and and we have the material. That really doesn't bother me, so I I'm not pushing that they have to show their face.
All right. So. I don't think anyone else from the commission would like it, so Jim, you don't have to create that language.
Okay, I have added a provision in my draft that does provide that there can be hybrid meetings, which I would call the the mayor grant provision. I know, Mayor, you'd like to be in the room there, so I have added that, that that constitutes, suppose, a legitimate meeting in combination with a virtual meeting. And if other commissioners wish to join you, they could certainly do so.
Excellent, yeah, no, I'm excited to be in the chambers next month. Or maybe we could have the emergency meeting there. Even better. All right, seeing no further comments, may I have a motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
Second.
All right, thank you, means adjourned. John, do you like to prepare the closing?
Yes, sir. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to the channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's city of Boynton Beach commission meeting. Be safe and have a great evening.
Bye, everyone.